We're reconvening at 1:07. I don't know if that's necessary for me to say, but it's a good thing to say. And I think we are. Carol and Mary Ann and Kyle are going to join us at the table. And this next item is a presentation on State Board of Education Policies on Bullying and Model Anti-Bullying Policy. Very timely. Board was a leader again on this, but certainly with the Rutgers issue and other recent events really heightening this. I think it's really important. And the cyber thing is just out of control. So here we go. You know, my part is just to give a little preamble, as you know. And a safe and supportive environment is necessary for students to learn and achieve high academic standards. Harassment or bullying, like other disruptive or violent behaviors, is going to disrupt both the student's ability to learn and the student's ability to educate. The State Board of Ed Model Anti-Bullying Policy was designed to assist local and intermediate school districts and public school academies to address conditions for learning and to facilitate implementation of local policies. And as we just said a moment ago, the recent events, Rutgers and other places, really call more attention to this. You don't know what it's going to take finally for legislature and others to follow up. But Carol, I'm turning it over to you at this point.
Thank you, Mike. It's really exciting to see how proactive the State Board is with so many of its policies. And you had your anti-bullying policy in 2006. And what that policy did was provide a framework for the school districts, and they've been following that. It's really unfortunate now that we need to bring that back for you to revisit because, as Mike said, the great deal of attention that's come up with bullying and harassment and the overall treatment of some children in our schools, both in Michigan and across the United States. So there's a lot of things that could impact an anti-bullying change right now. And I just want to list a few of those for you because everybody seems to be looking at it at the same time. Right now, there's pending reauthorization of ESEA in the U.S. Congress. There's pending legislation in the Michigan Legislature that you're fully aware of. And then there's pending change of the current Safe and Drug-Free Schools and Community Act money. So there's some very large things going on, both at the federal level and at the state level. The staff today, the purpose in us being here is to provide you with some of the specifics that are going on to help to guide you, provide some additional information should you choose to take a look at your policy again. Of course, to take copious notes if you would like us to make some changes to bring back to you at a later date. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mary Ann.
Okay, thank you. The Board has had a long record of doing a lot of policies that support and encourage schools in addressing bullying. In 2000, you adopted a couple of policies. One, that was a policy for creating effective learning environments and also a policy on, excuse me, safe schools. In 2001, you adopted the bullying policy. In 2005, it was the Universal Education Vision and Principles. In 2006, there were two more, the policy on positive behavior support and a model anti-bullying policy. In turn, the Department has taken numerous steps in helping schools to implement all of these policies. Specifically, we focused on data collection and dissemination of that data, training and technical assistance for school staff, identification and development of effective curriculum and materials for prevention, and garnering additional resources to support MDE and school efforts. Some of those things include data that we've been able to receive through SEPI. The school infrastructure database provides us with some and other data that documents the requests of things like the victims who have transferred to a safer school under the Safe Schools Choice Policy. Our staff has participated in numerous committees, tasks, task force, and coalition opportunities, such as the Safe Schools Initiative, the Transforming Youth Suicide Prevention Group, Adolescent Risk Assessment Work Group, and participation also in the Sexual Minority Youth Project, A Silent Crisis: Creating Safe Schools for Sexual Minority Youth Educational Issues of Gay, Lesbian, Bisexual, Transgender, and Questioning Youth. We've also been able to provide schools access to data from bullying questions that have been contained in the district's youth risk behavior survey and in the Michigan Profile for Healthy Youth. Now, we'd like to describe some of the upcoming steps that we're being taking, that are being taken by our Coordinated School and Health Unit. And I will turn this over to Carl Grant, the supervisor of that unit, to describe some of this.
Good afternoon, everyone. Hope you guys had a healthy lunch.
It was a comforting lunch.
It's a balance.
Back and cheese.
Back and cheese.
My goal today, real quickly, is just to give you, it's twofold. So one, describe some of the efforts and some of the newer initiatives that we're undertaking to help support schools and parents in this effort. And also, give you just a brief overlay of kind of what the data looks like for Michigan in terms of the issue and what it looks like in Michigan. So this is from our 2009 Michigan Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which is a state-weighted sample of Michigan high school students. And as you can see, the grade breakdown there. The question is, percent of Michigan high school students who have been bullied on school property. And the breakout is by grade. So you can see, as students progress through their high school experience, that level of bullying goes down for numerous reasons. But the state number right now is 24%. And so you can see as freshman and anecdotally, we don't have this data at the middle school level currently. We'll be collecting that data starting next year as well. But you can see that as that transition phase, especially in grade nine, you've got, you're new to the school. There's opportunities for other, you know, for upper seniors and juniors and others that are, you know, kind of pick on those lower grade levels. So now, the outcomes of that, and as Mike had mentioned, you know, some of the recent events that have caught national news, you know, the outcomes of being bullied, you know, fall into depression and suicide. And here, this breakout shows students from the same survey that reported, and reported based on the grades that they received. So students get asked, what grades do they mostly receive? And as you can see, as you aggregate it out by those that receive mostly A's or Bs or DNFS, there's a huge discrepancy in the number of students who have either felt depressed or, you know, considered suicide. So while this isn't causal in any means, it goes to show that, you know, the kids that, you know, we're trying to reach on the academic side of things in terms of AYP are the same kids that have higher health risk behaviors, and not only in this area, but if you look across the content, whether it's nutrition, physical activity, whether it's sexual health, this kind of breakout looks very similar.
Kyle? I may just be misreading this, but in case anyone else are reading correctly, does this mean that 28% of Michigan high school kids have made a suicide plan?
No, that's the breakout of the grades. So of the students that reported that they made a suicide plan, the way that breaks out is 28% of them have lower grades versus the higher grade amount, which is As and Bs, which 12% of them. So it's really a breakdown of that number. So if you answered, yes, I've made a suicide plan, that's how it breaks down in terms of, in terms of grades. So again, showing that those that have higher health risk behaviors are also struggling academically.
What percentage overall of high school students have made a suicide plan?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. I don't see Kim in here. I can get that number for you. It's consistent with national numbers. We're not, I want to say it's in the low teens, off the top of my head, but I can get you that specific number after we get done.
Low teens? That's scary.
Moving on, so this is a breakout of lead health education teachers. We have a similar survey that looks at policies and programs in terms of what schools are or aren't doing around school health-related stuff, including bullying and in the way of professional development. While there are many schools that are doing, that are trying to address this issue on multitudes of levels, we can still see that there's a need for more work. So here, the question is, percent of schools in which the lead health education teacher, which would be the person most likely to receive professional development in this area around bullying, received or wanted professional development. The lighter shaded colors are those that have said they've received additional professional development on suicide prevention, emotional mental health, or violence prevention. And then the darker shade is those that are reported that they wanted more of it. So obviously, there's a discrepancy in terms of the need, in terms of what teachers, especially those that are, again, health education teachers, who would be the ones that would receive, you know, that would be most willing, most likely to receive that professional development, and what they're actually getting. And so obviously, there's a need there in terms of how are we equipping them with the skills and knowledge to be able to effectively address this in their building. Again, similar numbers, that was at the high school. This is at the middle school level. Same question, a discrepancy between what teachers are receiving in the way of professional development in this area versus what they're receiving. And a couple of slides ahead, I'll talk a little bit more about some of the newer resources that we've been able to garner here in Michigan and how we're trying to address that need for professional development and training specifically. This question is related to students in terms of how are we equipping students with the skills and knowledge to be able to effectively prevent and address bullying in their school? So the question is, percentage of schools in which teachers work to increase student knowledge in specific health topics. So how are we providing specific education in this area to help support students? And the gray shaded area is at middle school, and the blue shaded area is the high school number. And, you know, again, there's work to be done there in terms of how are we equipping our students with the skills and knowledge to be able to prevent and address bullying? So how are we working to address this, not only support schools, but support our partners that are working in schools to help address this? Thanks to our partnership with the Office of Education and Innovation Improvement, we are working to integrate the data piece that Mary Ann talked about earlier. How are we providing data back? We've mentioned earlier about, you know, we collect a lot of data, but how are we giving it back to schools to be able to make decisions about programs and services, especially related to this? So through the Healthy School Action Tool and the Michigan Profile for Healthy Youth, both of which garner that type of data, we're incorporating that into districts' comprehensive needs assessment. So as school improvement teams begin to start using the CNA on a more regular basis, they're going to have to look, they're going to have to include this data as part of their school improvement planning process. In conjunction with OEI's School Improvement Grant, we've also leveraged two new federal grants from the U.S. Department of Defense that will be able to provide resources, not only in terms of dollars to schools, but also in terms of development of resources, in terms of materials and curriculum and other, you know, services that will be available to schools to help address this area. Building State Capacity Grant, with those dollars, we're going to be able to create, again, a toolkit that will help, so through MIFI, the districts get, it's a local level needs assessment. Districts get back similar data that I just showed you. So they get it specific to their school, to their district, and to their ISD region. So we want to work with staff on how to interpret that data and make program decisions based on what that data is telling them that's specific to their kids. We want to enhance an already free existing resource in terms of the bully-free schools training that is available and needs updating. We're going to use those resources to update it and to provide free training to schools with those dollars. We're also working in conjunction with the Michigan Association of Social Workers to implement the Eliminating Barriers for Learning Curriculum, which is a SAMSA federally-developed curriculum that's free to schools, but the training is an issue. And so with these resources, we're going to partner with the Social Work Association to provide free training at a regional level to schools. And the focus of that curriculum is really how are you creating an effective learning environment related to eliminating social-emotional barriers to learning, which would include bullying? As well as, we'll be using those dollars to revise the Michigan Model for Health High School Curriculum in terms of providing research-based strategies and methods for students to increase their skills and knowledge on, to prevent bullying and address it when they see it in their schools. A larger grant that is really going to be the focus of our partnership with OEI is the Safe and Supportive Schools Grant, which provides us, Michigan, with $6 million a year over the next four years to work specifically with the persistently low-achieving schools and implementing programs and services within those schools to address their needs in this area and in others. So it wouldn't just be bullying, but a big piece of that is focused on the climate. As we know, bullying is a huge piece of that. And so not only will we be using dollars to develop resources, I mentioned earlier, but those identified schools, as part of the persistently low-achieving list, would actually be receiving funds to address issues like bullying that they've identified through their needs assessment and collection. So really, the grant wants us to, what we've been doing for a long time now, using data to drive programs and services for kids. So that's the focus of that. And with that, we'll be developing and implementing school climate and bullying surveys that are newer, that we have available to schools right now, but not in the way that all schools can use it and not in the way that would feed you back data that you would then be able to use on a lot more easier level. So we're going to be doing that. We'll also be providing training to schools, again, on interpreting that data and how you drive decision-making, and then working with them to select effective program interventions that target their, that target their needs that they've identified as part of their needs assessment process. And, you know, we've got a lot of, a lot of anecdotally, you know, we receive calls all the time about students and parents being frustrated about how, you know, that they're dealing with this issue as a family within their district and how they can address it. And they feel like they've reached their wit's end in terms of working with the district and that they just need resources to help them, you know, kind of address this issue. So these are just a quick list of some of the things that Mary Ann had mentioned, a few of them already. That would be programmatic interventions that we'd be working with the PLA schools on implementing. One thing that I would want to point out is the Parent Action for Healthy Kids Board that's on the lower right-hand corner. We'll be working specifically with parents within these identified school buildings and districts on a whole host of issues, including bullying, and how they can, you know, help partner with schools to create a more conducive learning environment, more supportive learning environment, but also how to get, how to access resources and how to access help, you know, in those more severe cases. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Mary Ann and Carol.
I wanted to reemphasize the grant that Kyle just sort of quickly went over and said, oh, we got to have this Safe and Supportive Schools Grant. It really is an important grant. It was a highly competitive grant. Not too many states were awarded the grant. And we received the $6 million, we were just notified within the last couple of weeks, $6 million a year for four years. So that will help us to move a lot of things forward and especially in partnership with the Office of, the OEI Group Office of Innovation and Improvement. I will get that one of these days. So Carol?
I just think this is really exciting. The one thing that I keep picking up is the cross-agency work that this team does. And you heard Kyle talk about the persistently low-achieving schools, the PLAs, and the fact that a lot of the focus of this work will be targeting those schools first because we know there's a lot of issues. So between that and the partnerships external with other state agencies and other health-related organizations, it's really exciting. Mike?
Carol, could you and the team maybe, before we ask the Board for comments and questions, what, since the last time we visited this with the explosion of cyberbullying, what are the, maybe you could describe some of the impacts and some of the thinking in the Department? And then secondly, before you start that, I do want to acknowledge Kevin Efling, who is one of my heroes, who's very proactive in this regard and needs our support and help in terms of getting the right legislation and other kinds of proactive things to help with this very serious problem. And with Jerry here, and if Tim doesn't get a headline out of the gubernatorial candidates, maybe we get a little play on this yet today. So thoughts related to that specifically? But that's different than '06. I mean, that's just exploded off the charts since we, early.
On both levels, both the data collection piece in terms of what we know about cyberbullying and the kind of prevalence of it, as well as the interventions in terms of how you address it, is really kind of a new frontier in that sense. There's a lot of work being done with social media and social marketing to how you kind of combat that. Schools have been proactive in terms of developing policies that would allow them to have some influence over bullying that would happen, you know, electronically. But that's kind of on a case-by-case basis, whether or not it happens on school property or within the home. So the technology and the intervention piece is just starting to kind of catch up with that explosion right now, I guess is what I would say. So part of the resources with that climate grant will be working on social marketing piece and how we reach kids where they're at right now, especially with this issue.
Thank you. Board members, Liz and John and Mary Ann?
I have a couple of things. One, I wanted, I was struck by the second slide that you showed with the percent of Michigan high school students who reported they'd been bullied on school property. And it, our ninth grade is 30%, and then it goes down, then it goes down, then it goes down. And I'm wondering if the decline, as someone becomes, as you're surveying grade 12, isn't due to the fact that maybe students who've been bullied have left school and have left the environment. And so what you're actually, you know, measuring is the people who are still there because we know we've lost a lot. And also, a lot of suicidal ideation and action occurs in those years, too. So I just thinking, and maybe there, you know, whenever you look at a statistic, there's a lot of reasons why it could be, but I think it's something we need to keep in mind. And then while I have the floor back on the very last slide where there are all of the different actions in terms, something I'd like to work on with you or with other people is that how to reach those parents who are not the active involved ones? You know, we go to the big districts and the readily available parent network. People are all there. There are disenchanted, disaffected people who are probably equally loving their children and critical. And there's some, there's some ways to get to them through different communities. And I think we should focus some of our attention on the people we don't really, you know, not the first ones we always sign up. And then the other thing, and I think you'll probably get to this, but with the explosion of cyberbullying, the anti-bullying training programs we have today, which I think were quite good where they were used five years ago and earlier, really need to be addressed. Because this is bullying that you don't see in the hall. You know, I mean, we're always telling kids, tell an adult and, you know, or stop it when you see it. But you don't see it if it's online.
Thanks, Liz. It's a good point. John and Mary Ann?
Two questions on the same chart, this youth risk survey data. Do we have trend data? Has that survey been done every year? And what does it show if we do in terms of, are we going the right way or the wrong way? That's one question. And the other is, is this kind of data disaggregable by district? Because that would be a pretty powerful set of indicators, whether some district have a, I don't know if you do it by school, whether some districts have a bigger problem than others.
Right. To your first question, we do have the trend data. I think that some of these questions have been, CDC changes the questions over time, but the kind of the core ones, we have since '97. So, you know, Michigan kind of mirrors national. We're not too far above, we're not too far below what the national numbers are over time. And it's been pretty flat.
It hasn't been going?
Is it getting worse?
Not around the, not in the explosion in terms of the media that you see, but over time, in terms of statistically significant increases, it's been hovering right around the same numbers, you know, within a four or five-point range over the last 11 years. To the second point, not with the youth risk behavior data specifically, we don't have it by district. The Michigan Profile for Healthy Youth, the MIFI that we talked about, basically provides districts with that same thing. They get data that's specific to them that is a combination of youth risk behavior data survey or questions and protective factors. So how is the environment either helping or hindering a whole host of risk factors? Districts, it's free to districts, they can use it. We had a huge explosion in terms of, we run it every two years in the off-cycle IRBS. We had an 88% increase in the number of districts that took advantage of using that system this past time. That would get, that gets districts specifically data on what the issue looks like in their district with their kids. And we've aggregated that data to a county level. So, you know, our partners in CMH and other groups that are doing work in this area in schools can see what it looks like and can plan based on a county level. But that data is available to districts for their planning purposes specifically.
Are we prohibited, or is it just a policy decision? Have we chosen to publicly release that data and shine a public spotlight on bullying performance or non-performance by district? Because it seems like if we, unless we're prohibited from it, that would be a choice we could make to try to, I mean, nothing drives attention like, you know, we're getting attention to school performance results. Nothing drives attention to change things if you're shining a public spotlight on it.
We can, then?
We can.
That was a good time to do it.
Are we, there's nothing precluding us by confidentiality or law from shining a public spotlight on that data? Or is it public data anyway, but no one's looking? We're not giving it to our friends in the media?
Yeah, it is public data. We haven't, we haven't publicized it in that sense, you know, for a whole host of reasons. And we really said, you know, it's the district's data. And we have a lot of examples of places where schools are using that data. We have districts in McComb that are sending it home to all their parents and are using it in that manner. And we have others that, you know, for a multitude of reasons, want to, you know, use it for their own planning purposes and maybe share it with their, again, their interagency partners within their county or within their city to help, you know, plan for given services that would come from CMH or from the Health Department or other areas. But so there's a wide range of that.
You know, just in the spirit of what John's saying, and thinking out loud, but can it be another column just for people to understand that data in terms of even our top-to-bottom list with the many other columns that we have? I'm sorry, you, you're not on all the time, Joseph? I mean, my gosh. No, this wasn't your item, but the point being that data related to bullying, it's not by schools, though, is it? It's by districts, you just said?
It's aggregated at the school building level, at the district level, and at the ISD level.
I mean, it would be interesting if there's a correlation, kind of in the way that Liz described, that, and there's no downside, right? This is a very visible place now. So as Joseph's been adding columns of other data so that schools can understand, you know, here's some of the issues on top to bottom, but as you go over on columns, is your sense that that is?
I mean, I think this is a policy decision that deserves full consideration. I'm sure schools would have opinions about, is the most effective thing for them to have the data and use it constructively to treat the issue? Or is it important and necessary or better for us to shine a public spotlight and use the, you know, the disinfectant of sunshine to drive, you know, attention, which is?
We should look at the data ourselves first to see what the correlation is, if there is a correlation.
Why don't we do that first? Carol, you were ready to?
We were just trying to figure out, and so we're a little disjointed down here, what percentage of districts actually do this because it is voluntary. So you wouldn't have a, you know, every district. A third. Steph's saying a third of the districts probably.
I think it was Mary Ann and Kat, then Carol.
Could I just say one thing? Because Kyle is a wonderful interagency person, and so he's throwing around some initials that everybody might not understand. I think everybody knows that CDC is Centers for Disease Control and CMH is Community Mental Health. You're welcome.
What does SMY phrase?
What is SMY? Sexual Minority Youth? Sexual Minority Youth.
Thank you.
Well, my question was pretty much along the lines of what John had to say. And I was just wondering if we had information on programs that are working, whether here in Michigan or anywhere in the U.S.? And if we could, it sounds wonderful what we're doing, and I'm very excited. And if we could, it sounds wonderful what we're doing, and I'm very excited about the $6 million grant, $6 million a year for four years. But I think if there's something out there that is working, if we could incorporate that as well, might be helpful.
Yeah, thank you. Kat and then Carol.
I think that's a, that's a good idea, I think. And I'm glad we're going to be doing more training of the staff, because one of the things that people have told me about in schools, when you talk about, when you refer that it's not in the halls, many times it's in the halls and teachers just ignore it. Well, kids will be kids, just can't do anything about it, that's the way they are. And I think we can do something about it if we teach them properly. So that, I think that's, that's good. But when we get to, are we going to discuss the policy on bullying?
Yeah.
This all came out of our legislative committee. We tried to get action in the legislature on the heavy bullying bills, and it doesn't seem to be moving, so we thought we should focus attention on it and reiterate our policy. But in reiterating our policy, I, you've been talking about the cyber bullying and Liz. I had put cyber, add a cyber bullying into the first paragraph where it talks about over time by others who even can take many forms, including any combination of physical, emotional, and verbal abuse. I would say physical, emotional, verbal, and cyber abuse. Put it in there someplace. If we're going to reiterate this policy, I think we should add some reference to cyber.
Right.
And then the second paragraph is recent tragedies, and this was, when did we do this?
2006.
Yeah, 2001. Recent tragedies. We still have recent tragedies. Oh, one.
It was Columbine at that time.
Yeah. Oh, at least this one wasn't, it wasn't that many kids, but anyway, recent tragedy involved violence in schools across the nation. And I was adding together with suicides by students. Later in it, it does say including suicides, severe emotional problems, including suicide and physical. But it seems to me that it's more than just violence in schools, it's suicides as well, so I would have put it up, add something in that first sentence.
Yeah, makes sense.
So, other people might have other things they wanted to edit into it, but that's what I wanted to add to it, so. But this information that you gave, Kyle, of the survey is really interesting and I think valuable. I think we should look into whether there's a correlation between bullying and the condition of the school.
Maybe during Lisa's report, we can also get an update on what we think we might want to do in terms of legislation. I think it was Carolyn and then John.
Well, mine was just, I guess, kind of a question. When I looked at that first chart, and who to talk about it again with, in my mind, looking at it, and it goes down to 16% at the senior year, do you think that's mostly in part because some of the bullies have dropped out of the school scene? Or when kids are seniors, they're not as easily bullied, maybe?
Like Liz had mentioned, I think it's a combination of both. I mean, you've got less kids that are there by the time, you know, they get to 12th grade, and they're also more established in the school community at that point, so they've, you know, they've got a different status in the school building than what they do when they're in ninth grade. So I think it's a whole, a whole host of reasons, but I think that's part of it.
In a middle school context, do you find that the, like, the eighth grade would be as large as the freshman?
Again, since it's a bullying thing, I think some of those same factors play themselves out at middle school, so I think you'd see sixth and seventh grade being higher than eighth grade, because again, they've got a different status in the building than as sixth and seventh graders or whatever, you know, the configuration is. So I think those numbers would look, the shape of the slope would look similar.
A little reversed, perhaps.
Good observation. Good observation. John?
My understanding is we have, our bullying policy, which we had up a few years ago, has been a good policy, meaning it includes many of the features, you know, you can't stand by and watch, and you have to take action, et cetera. And I think we have, and so we've been saying, school districts implement this policy by our exhortation directive, policy fiat, whatever that is worth. But I think we've been supportive of legislation that would require school districts, if I understand the legislation, to basically implement a policy consistent with the state board's guidelines, which hasn't happened yet, we would strongly continue to encourage. But are there updates to the policy guidance and the model policy that you all are seeing, staff and others who are working every day, in addition to how does it be refreshed to reflect the cyber reality? Are you all seeing, are the recommendations you are making or would like to make on how our model policy could be strengthened or updated to be appropriate at this moment? I'm sure we'd be open to it and to support it.
What do you think?
I mean, there are options that we could add that would be better reflective of the time and better reflective of the resources that are available in terms of what schools are doing. Again, as Carol mentioned, her bullets, you know, there is kind of a policy change that's coming at a broader level that would impact what may or may not be in that policy, or that may or might not be included in that policy, whether or not it's a two-pronged thing, whether we include stuff now and then if something, you know, changes either at the federal level or state legislation, that we come back and incorporate those pieces, I think is, you know, it can be done, done both ways. But I think there are practical things that we're implementing right now in terms of our resources and training with schools that aren't reflecting the policy that could be.
And one of the things with John mentioning that the, at least the proposed legislation had mirrored or at least referred to the state board, that might be the advantage of doing something more quickly if Lisa and others of you think that lame duck has perhaps more of a chance than, or more of a chance than it's had in the past. And Kevin might want to weigh in on that also at some point. But for now, Liz?
Yeah, I was just going to suggest, we're going to have a major change in our state legislature, no matter what, after November 2nd. But I believe that the people who've been willing to sponsor legislation around anti-bullying will be back and probably reelected and still there. And I would suggest that going forward, that committee of the board and staff and those legislators who are willing to carry the ball, I mean, carry the whole ball and not half a ball, well, you know, they watered it down all the time over there. Plan and thoughtfully come back. Massachusetts passed legislation this past year that's quite inclusive, has a lot of good cyber, anti-cyber bullying stuff in it, training, professional development. It's quite a good law. And not that we want to necessarily do their law, but we could build on what's working there, it's being demonstrated through their training. And maybe have a team that could then bolster, you know, not only can we get our policy updated and enriched, but then there'd be some backup for the legislators in a new session introducing something. And, you know, there are going to be a lot of new faces over there, and we can educate them.
Lisa, do you ever thought about that?
Just that there's a large group of advocates that have been working together on this legislation. And I know that they have a strategy and have been pushing hard for something during, I believe, a lame duck session. So...
They may, yeah.
We may get something through still this year. In fact, all we really have left is lame duck, timing-wise, and in which case, that would be something to look for, for perhaps the next step if you want to strengthen it. But just so you know, there is a push going on right now.
No, I'm aware of that. I'm part of all those people on my other life. I have a lot of life.
But are we involved in all those strategy sessions? In fact, our staff are often on the conference calls. I try to get on the conference calls when I can, but I know Bob Higgins and Kyle, I think they're both on the conference call. So yes, we are a part of that.
And maybe in the spirit of what some of the board said, would we want to think about updating it at least on an interim basis? I heard Kyle saying there's also guidance coming, but on an interim basis, so that if it's referred to, it's referred to a current policy? Or is it, I guess it's more generic, it's referring to a state board policy anyway? So maybe I'm answering my own question. That we could still do that in our own time?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other board comments?
I have a tendency to be all too candid sometimes, but I think one of the tactics before, I don't know if the tactics under consideration now, that would allow legislators to vote for it without naming things they don't want to name, like sexual orientation or transgender, was if our policy includes those items of what, who cannot be bullied and, you know, then, and if it's referred to, then allows legislators to be more spineless and not have to draw attention to the fact that they're supporting a policy which appropriately prevents discrimination, bullying of a bunch of named categories that they don't want to be associated with. So, you know...
Our model policy does. I don't know about this policy.
So our model, if our model policy is referred to, then it should be updated as fast as possible to be the right policy, so that if it were to be referred to as a tactical maneuver, it would be the policy that we believe is the right policy.
I don't believe the policy is specifically mentioned in the current legislation act.
But the legislation refers to our model policy.
No, not anymore.
Not anymore.
It's been watered down so far. I always hope it doesn't pass, because they'll not deal with it for 10 years if they just passed the law. But, you know, I mean, we've got to do something as a state. We are just lagging so far behind in a public statement of protection of youth.
Was there any downside, whether it's referred to or not now, to bringing in an updated version in November, even if it's tweaking some words here and there? And then it may or may not be referred to, but it might give the kind of ammunition that John's...
Be the right policy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I think we should update as quickly as possible, because, like you said, I think, you know, if the legislature's going to move forward on something, then I want them to have what we have. And then plus, when we do that, it puts it back into the public spotlight, so that, you know, even if the watered down, ridiculously watered down version were to pass the legislature, we still have something that's, at the same time we're talking about that, we're also talking about our policy.
Does that sound right? Team, we'll bring back something that we think is a little more up to date.
Is it possible for us to, you know, I don't know if the legislation's going to do anything, but if they, even if they do, if we reiterate the policy, if we ask districts to report back, send us their policies they have adopted already?
We could ask, but I mean, after a day or now, especially where...
Is that a hard decision?
Yeah. We can still ask, and many will comply.
So maybe we'll get something to feel for, how many districts really have policies? Are they, is there any way of checking on whether they implement? You know, do they do, do they do training? Do they do professional development? Do they do anything like that?
I wonder if it, I'm just thinking out loud, it could be agenda planning, but I'm wondering if you guys have a district or two that you think are models, maybe they come in and talk to us a little bit at the same time while we're looking at...
Yeah, that's a good idea, too.
That's a thought. You know, we could look at, talk about that in agenda planning, but you probably have some that you think are ideal and handle this appropriately, and maybe that would be another way to shine some light on, give them some light of day here at the board meeting. Okay? We're good for now? Okay, thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
It has to be 1:30 or later, so it is now, and I'll see if there's any public participation.
No public participation, really.
Great.
Public must be very satisfied.
Kevin's got one. Come on, bring it up. Kevin's got one.
Yeah.
Please, you're it, Kevin, so come on up and...
I'm it.
Kevin Eflin from East Lansing.
I'm always it somehow. Thank you. My name's Kevin Eflin, I live in East Lansing, Michigan. I heard this was going to be on your agenda today, so I decided to make it a point to come down here. I came down here five years ago, when you were actually going to implement this bullying, anti-bullying policy, and made sure that we had a technology requirement in it. I'm one of your people that is feet on the grounds. You know, I'm out there, I'm in the schools, I'm listening to what's happening. If you are going to add to the policy, which is a very, very good policy, and I wish every school would adopt it, I would really look at, in the terms of cyberbullying or any electronic abuse, I think you have to widen it. One of the things in the policy that we have is that it is restricted to telecommunications devices owned by the school. Somehow, we really need to widen that net and make schools really look beyond their own doorways and their own streets and hallways, because they need to go back to like your student code of conduct and when that is applicable, anytime, anyplace where student safety is at risk. That's what schools should be looking at, and that's how they should be dealing with cyber issues today. A lot of schools, and I've talked with teachers, I've talked with administrators, they don't know where to stop, so they let it continue. They don't want to get involved, so many more problems arise because they don't step in. I'm starting to see more and more schools are now starting to take the opposite tact of actually stepping in ahead of time, as soon as something happens. Those things are happening outside the school's purview, but it affects what's happening in the school. I see cyberbullying no different than what is happening between a mother and a father and their son or daughter. If there's a domestic issue, the school wants to know what's happening, if they have to do anything about that, to increase their education. Cyber issues is exactly the same thing. The longer we ignore this, the worse it's going to get. In the last five years, you know, we have really seen a spike in cyberbullying. You know, our kids know how to get around us constantly with technology. You know, when I talk at schools and I talk about cyberbullying, I will always tell the principal, come stand next to me. Because when I start to talk about cyber issues and the legalities associated with that, you will start to see, all the other kids will start to look at the ringleaders. They will start to point them out, very unconsciously.
Wow.
But it's very easy for me to go to the principal and say, there, 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 there are your ringleaders. Start working on them, because they'll give it up. And I think the other thing is the education. You know, I am all about education, empowerment, and engagement. Those are your three things on anti-bullying. You talked about getting the parents involved and getting the students. I would love to see some of this funding that we're going to be getting, really to activate the student population within our schools. I firmly believe the student population are going to be those, are going to show us what they can do. I went to a school about a year and a half ago down in Macomb County, started, they started a hero in the hallway program. 12 kids signed up, they have now more than 60, who are active, helping fellow students. You know, we talk about the legislation, the legislation is watered down, yes, because of our politicians more so than anything, but it is a step in the right direction to make sure that our schools have a policy. You have to look at the historical context of what was asked by this board of our schools in 2001 to start developing policies. I've heard, over the last seven years, various schools have various percentages of what schools have policies, which ones don't. We have asked, never gotten a solid number, a solid list of the schools. Why are MSAB cannot do that? I do not understand that. They should have it a list. And that's one thing that I strongly support in the piece of legislation. Every school has to turn that into the State Board of Education. I don't care if they sit in a stack. We're going to have them. We're going to have them for the very first time to say, you know what Macomb County's doing? Do you know what Clare County is doing? We'll have it. Right now, we have absolutely nothing. That's why this data that we're gathering, we're starting to gather, we're so far behind, we have to push forward. We're one of the last five states to be doing anything legislatively on this issue, you know? So our schools have to get involved. The other thing that has to come down is leadership. Leadership on this issue, from this board, from the teachers, from the administration, and leadership within our students, so that our students are pushing up at the same time our administrators are pushing down. I'm a big proponent of community activism, and community has to be a piece of this. So I just wanted to come down and say that. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but thank you so much for reopening this.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you for your persistence.
Lisa? So you finally lost that Spartan helmet today, huh? You walked around with all day and all week.
Just one day.
You lose a bet. Yeah, these guys don't rub it in at all with each other, they kind of, this one's fun for me to watch, because I just sit back. They kind of, this one's fun for me to watch because I just sit back.
I had a little Spartan helmet on the end of my pen.
Can't close too much.
Oh, no, no, wait, at all. Can't close at all.
A couple of things we've already hit on. A couple of things we've already hit on. Number one, I've heard people talk about the big change. By the time you guys have your next meeting, we'll have an election and we'll have an idea of what the picture of that, what that picture looks like. It's interesting, the NCSL just came out and said Michigan isn't a battleground state, which means they don't think either the House or Senate will flip. I mean, you know, I think it depends on who you talk to and on which day. But regardless of whether either, either side picks up one of the chambers or not, or if any of them flip, there's still going to be a huge change in both chambers from leadership all the way down. So regardless, there'll be a lot of work to be done in terms of meet and greets, making sure that they understand the role of the state board, making sure they understand the role of the department, going through all of the legislation that was just passed that they weren't here, the new folks weren't here to be a part of. So it'll be starting from scratch for many of them who will say race to the what? I mean, they'll have read it in the paper, but that won't be something that they've read line by line or stayed here until three in the morning or seven in the morning to get passed. So it really will be a huge change for, for all of us to adjust to. And I think I said it earlier, all we have left is lame duck, really. The legislature is in tentatively every Wednesday in October, but I don't think that they'll probably be in for any of that. It'll probably be three days in November, at the beginning of November, and then two weeks in December, and that's it. And they're gone until January with a new administration and new leadership in both chambers.
And mostly new members.
And, yes, and a ton of new members. In the Senate, it's 30 of 38, I believe, will be new. Now, some of those will be coming from the House, so they won't be completely new to Lansing. And they'll have at least some idea of how the process works and.
Somebody from the State Board of Education.
There could be someone from the State Board of Education there, which would be wonderful for, you know, education advocates everywhere.
I hope you can serve in both capacities, though, if that were to happen. Have we figured that out? I didn't even think of that.
Yeah, I'm sure we can make it work.
Okay.
Make a law.
Right.
I don't want to give up the pay from this job.
I know. What would I do? Last month, we had several folks come in and testify about early intervention programs. One of them was Senator Casse, and she talked about her bill, Senate Bill 1284. That is a bill that encourages districts to implement a program looking at early intervention for literacy and numeracy skills, especially in those PLA districts, the bottom percent. In other words, if you're in this percentage at the bottom, you really need to be looking at implementing an early intervention program so that you're getting in with the kids right as soon as they're showing any kinds of problems and setting up some sort of assistance to move the children up. Having said that, I think last month, we inadvertently said that we already, that the board already supported, had stated their support for the legislation. And in fact, you guys never have had a motion on that bill. So I do support, I do recommend that you support that legislation. We worked very closely with Senator Casse to take what was a pretty narrow bill and make it broader to give a little more flexibility to the local districts while still maintaining high standards for what is early intervention. And.
I think we must have verbally said that while she was in the audience, but I guess we didn't actually call the question. That's my fault.
I think we supported her concept, but it's not the actual legislation. But that's, it's fine.
Kathy and I aren't here, all hell breaks loose.
You can't even rain on things when you are.
So what would, what would you suggest?
Given the past support of the board on early intervention programs, I would suggest the board support the bill.
And it's Senate Bill 1284.
Yeah, I move that we support it because we have our report on early education. I mean, we have a track record of supporting this. And so I move that we, as the state board, support 12, Senate Bill 1284, support.
By Liz, supported by Carolyn. Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oh, same? Thanks for catching that.
You had talked about the bullying. There is a move to, by the advocates, to push something through during the lame duck session. If, as you're running into members on, out in the community, to the extent you can, and give a little push for that during the lame duck, that would be great. I think Mr. Eflin has said it best when it's a small step, but it's a step in the right direction.
Well, if he's happy with a small step, then I'll be happy with it.
The last thing I wanted to note was something I just learned today with the Education Jobs Fund. You know, the legislature had passed a bill to appropriate that funding and had specified a specific formula for how it was going to be distributed. The governor vetoed one section of that bill today because the formula that the legislature used, the governor received a letter from the federal government, from the U.S. Department of Ed, saying, you can't do it that way, essentially. In specifics, they said that you can't use the Ed Jobs Fund to restore a cut and you can't use it for a formula other than your primary formula. So the legislature had taken part of the funding and, I believe, used what was called a 2X formula, which meant districts with a lower foundation allowance were going to get a larger increase than the higher. And I think the feds are saying, you just have to use your basic formula, whatever that is. The ISD money wasn't vetoed, the administrative money wasn't vetoed, and the 65 million for the part that was being distributed through the regular formula, it wasn't vetoed. It's the other piece, the section two. And so I, right away, got to Carol Wolenberg, and that's good because apparently our folks were ready to start shooting checks out. So now that we know that, they're going to have to do some sort of a supplemental. I don't know if that means they'll try to push the legislature to come back on one of those Wednesdays in October or if they'll just wait till that first week in November and we'll just get the funding out that wasn't vetoed and save that other piece for once there's an appropriation.
The irony is, I think, in other words, the 2X districts are the ones that won't get the money and the non-2X districts will?
Everyone will get some because a portion of the money was going to be distributed via just the regular formula. But a bigger portion was set aside for, I think, this 2X formula. And their, my understanding is that that won't happen, though.
And Carol, are we able to distribute it with that kind of bifurcation? Are we?
I believe we are with reimbursement, right, Willie? Because it goes out through our federal system.
The legislature talks about the primary funding formula, so as it's approved, we can get it out. I mean, as it was approved, and so whatever adjustments we have to make, we'll be able to get it out, provided that it's a primary funding formula.
What would we, I mean, for the sake of discussion, so the total amount, remind me, the total amount was what?
316.
And of that X amount was according to the formula?
65 million.
So the 65 can go to all districts, distributed?
Right.
Is that?
Well, at the end, I mean, that's, from our point, it just comes down as a spreadsheet with numbers that the, on the side. So we just, we can get that way. The concern was how it was distributed, which is.
The only thing, the reason I'm pushing that is if all districts can get some money now, regardless of the legislature coming back, that will help them because they have needs for the money right now. So all districts can get some money now. And then the rest of the money would be distributed after they figured out how they were going to, which is probably just use the regular formula. That's basically what they do.
That would be my guess, but.
We'd have to.
Like I said, this was something I learned at lunchtime. I got a phone call, so.
Because otherwise, I mean, it's maybe not as problematic if they can start getting some money now, is what I'm getting at.
About as much as what they were hoping to get.
It's only about a fifth or something, huh? But for those with cash flow issues or with, they brought people back based on that and they're starting to pay them. Well, we'll have to, maybe we'll have to report back to you. But at least for now, it looks like we could do at least that part, let the spigot flow on the 65 million. And then hopefully, they come back in October to talk about the rest. And we could handle that in two different distributions in effect. Okay? Cool. Any, John?
Are there rumors of anything else during lame duck on school finance or legacy costs or anything?
The only piece that I've heard is the anti-bullying. Both the House and the Senate recently had hearings on bills related to consolidation of services and of districts, the Senate on districts, the House on services. They both said that they wanted to have further hearings. I'm not sure if that's something they're planning on doing this session still or if they'll wait until the next. Some of it will just come down to, are there any bills that absolutely have to get done? They'll start looking at it, you know, are there sunsets that we have to fix before? Supplementals like this bill obviously will have to be done.
Okay, any other questions for Lisa? Okay, thank you, Lisa. Maybe we can jump to consent agenda, and then I think we'd be ready when our guest gets here.
I move we adopt the consent agenda.
For? By Liz, it was supported by Reggie. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oh, same? Okay. Should we? Yes, we did. So I guess we just pause till. Board member comments, housekeeping? Because in a way, we don't want to break up. If it's the second time we break up, we won't get back together by the time. Breaking up is hard to do anyway.
People.
Some of the people my age maybe got that, but breaking up is hard to do. Come on, Mary Ann, you usually help me with this stuff. Thank you, Reggie's younger, but he got it.
I got it.
Oh, no. Now we're going to have the Chandels or whatever in the background here. Comments from board members or? Well, I'd say to be safe, maybe if you don't mind, just come back at 20 after, just 25. If we see them earlier, we'll, because the first one would be Callie, if I'm understanding. And we don't know yet whether there's, we'll see. Okay.